I'd like to welcome you to July 24, 2018. This is a budget workshop number one. And we'll determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. With that said, we'll call this meeting to order and conduct the workshop session one. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What I'd like to do is go through sort of an overview of the process for what we'll be doing as far as the development of the F-19.
Hold on just a minute. Let's let Ms. Winger come on in. Hello, Ms. Winger. Go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'll wait till she's seated and ready to go.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Again, as I mentioned, what we'd like to do is give a sort of an overview and the budget process we've been following as far as the development of the F-19 proposed budget. As you're aware, obviously, the annual budget serves as our policy document, our financial plan, our operation guide and communication device for the city. It's the foundation for the city's allocation of resources towards service delivery plans, providing quality service, target investments, and continued improvements. The budget document also is used to evaluate the effectiveness of the city programs and services while providing extensive information on municipal operations. As we begin to review each department's five-year approved budgets and individual line item expenses, we have identified the need to examine certain expenses throughout the department's operational budgets. Some of the analysis could be related to other possible revenue streams and possible future savings through possibly bidding, using purchasing co-ops, or change in products, et cetera. As we began this process, we created a budget request form for departments to complete if changes, plus or minuses to line items. Additionally, as a very basic beginning to a future CIP development, departments were given a sheet to list departmental needs and unfunded requirements for future capital item projects, not just in 2019 with prioritization. It is important we collect this type of data in order to review trends to help ensure the quality of services will remain at existing levels while efficiently using and protecting our fiscal resources. Moving forward, we must ensure we continue to maintain and provide excellent municipal services to citizens, businesses, and visitors while ensuring appropriate funding and tracking of all financial resources. Obviously, as you're aware, the city operates the budget between January 1st and December 31st. And this is a comprehensive effort that involves the city council, the department heads, outside agencies for that matter. The process provides opportunity for residents to speak out on the budget, and we'll hold two public hearings before we adopt the budget. Last month, myself, Ms. Vigans, and departments reviewed our budget recommendations and service delivery plans. The intent of today's workshop and next Tuesday's workshop is to provide a preliminary proposed budget and receive feedback before formally presenting a proposed budget in a few weeks. The next step will be adoption, obviously, in September, where we'll have the budget and tax rate presented to city council in August. Will be made available on the city website and other publications at the time. A notice of the tax rate and upcoming public hearings will be placed in the local newspaper. As for tonight, we'd like to give an overview of some preliminary revenues. We also have our police department and Public Works providing their operational budgets and providing what they do within their departments and any type of needs they may have moving forward. I also will include and discuss later the meeting schedule as we continue and some other additional budgetary items that the council needs to consider moving forward. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Vigans, and she's going to go through some of the slides here that talk about our sales tax and other preliminary revenue numbers.
Before we get started, I want to make sure, you said that there was going to be two public hearings, town hall meetings, hearings to go over the budget?
Yeah, I think we've...
Do we have the dates of those yet? I just wanted to make sure for anybody that's here so they'll know when they'll be able to speak on the budget.
We have the first reading of the budget and the second reading of the budget.
Okay.
Tuesday, September 11th is the first reading of the budget.
Tuesday, September the 11th.
And Tuesday, September 18th is the second public hearing and reading of the budget.
September 18th. Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Ms. Vigan?
Good evening, Council, citizens. So, the first slide we have here, and you should have in your packet, has everybody found the first presentation? So, first slide is going over sales tax. And currently, your 2018 sales tax is budgeted at $1,100,000. Based on a five-year average, and I have another spreadsheet I brought with me that I put all many years in, more than five years, but the five-year average is $997,517. So, at first, I didn't prepare the 2018 budget, but it was reasonable. But as we go along, trending through July, and we have July's numbers, you are 3.6% slightly lower than this time last year. And based on that trend, I think 2018's going to come in at about $1 million. So, that's the current year. So, for the future year, you know, when it comes to sales tax projections, it's hard to get information. It's hard to analyze some of that, but there are some things in the future we can do such as get a confidential report. It comes from the state. It's a very large, comma delimited file. It's kind of cumbersome to read, especially when you have a lot of sales taxpayers. But it is something we could start receiving. It can't be given to the public, et cetera, that might help us look at future to figure out why we're seeing a decrease now. And then, there are some firms out there that offer analyzation and trends that, because they put it into some softwares, and they're, most of them fairly reasonable, that'll help you as well. So, but right now, I think even for this new year, I think unless we see a change in the next two months, again, at 2019, we anticipate it to be a million-dollar projection. It's some weird anomalies when I look at your last five years. It's not just one year. It's months are up and down, and I don't have enough history right now to know why. It could be multiple taxpayers itself. Any quick questions on move on?
Yeah, I got a question on that. Anybody else? Skip, you have any question on that? I just find it interesting that we would be trending at a negative 3.06% with the business we're bringing in town. You know, we've got the new stuff on West Avenue. We've got the new stuff on Northwest Military Highway. I'm sure everybody doesn't want me to bore them with who it is. The new restaurants coming in. Why could that be?
Again, that's without having all of the data that you could look at, you know, I don't have some of those answers. I mean, I just don't. I just know the numbers, and I'm looking at each year. And again, it's not like, just as an example, and I'll just use, this is a strange one. I'll use January of 16, which is 2016. You had $78,441 for the general fund. And then, January of 17, you were at $91,000. So, it jumped quite a bit. Then it went to $80,000 for this year. There could be, that 91 may have been because you had delinquent payers. And there is some stuff that's not necessarily confidential, but that would require a lot more analyzation, and I haven't gone that far. But based on, I mean, I just don't have that information. It's not something I can just...
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
I was just wondering how you arrived at that figure with, you know, the new shopping centers on 410?
Yeah, just comparing.
I mean, the actuals are about six weeks behind anyways, Mayor, so we may not gotten that revenue accounted for just yet, so, some of the new businesses.
All right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see that, yeah. Depends on, but again, that's January. So, January looks, again, it's odd. Could be a lot of factors.
Well, I agree with you, Ms. Mayor, because according to the news reports, the state is trending 10 to 25% higher in sales tax, so the fact it will be lower seems questionable.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and so, without getting some of those confidential reports and really looking at it, they're very cumbersome to see if you've got somebody that's not reporting anymore, or did they move their headquarters and their address got changed? I mean, there's so many...
We need to find out.
Ms. Vigans, is there a cost for the confidential reports to obtain those?
No, they're just confidential when the city manager has to send a letter in and ask, and again, they're very picky about it confidentially. But again, it's a huge document. It'll take a lot to analyze it.
Well, I think I break out the popcorn. We got to know. We got to know why.
Yeah, and I saw, again...
Especially when the state is trending up, like Ms. Winger said. I mean, we're blowing and going. So, where's the money?
And like I said, there are companies, they charge a minimal fees.
Okay, well, let's just keep that in mind.
So, it's something of an option in the future.
Thank you, Council. Go ahead.
Okay. Are we good on sales tax? Good? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so, on the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about court revenues. Currently, you have court revenue, that is court income, you have your step money and your warrants. At the very beginning, court income, again, I'm looking at 2018, what was budgeted based on what I'm seeing. I think there's going to be a decrease. It was increased in the budget process last year, but it's not trending that high. So, again, the next, you know, we still have a month or two between now and the end of the budget, so these are just preliminary. This is based on where we are today. So, I'm looking at that line would be decreased. Steps looks pretty good. Warrants, again, I'm not seeing the higher trend. It was increased. I'm not seeing it. So, we also, and at the end, we do have, they're very back, we have a five-year, I meant to mention this a minute ago, spreadsheet that's five years' history that y'all can look at at home when you get later on. It's in the back of your packets. So, it shows you all your revenue line items for the last five years averaging, so that, just to kind of give you an idea. So, the next, the next section or the piece is, you have line items in your revenues. One's called court tax and one's called LGB collections. The court tax is money that goes to the state, that is collected on a fine, that belongs to the state, and it's state money. LB, excuse me, LGB collections is the collection agency company that they tack on for people that are in warrants and go to the collection, and they haven't come and paid, and they tag on a fee, that's a Lumberger, that's allowed by a state statute. Both of those are pass-throughs. They're not your revenue. Cities don't report those in their financial statements. They don't report them in their budgets. Most cities don't include them because they're not your fees. So, then you turn around and you pay those fees off to the Lumberger. You pay the fees to the state quarterly. Even when your audit's being done at the end of the year, the auditors take those revenue lines and those expense lines that you have, which are located in the court budget, and they net them together. And the difference is, they put it under revenue because you do collect fees on, or a service fee for collecting the state fee. So, again, it really looks like you have a lot of extra revenue, and it's not your revenue. So, I'm proposing that y'all do not record those revenues, excuse me, record those fees as a revenue and put it on the balance sheet like the majority of cities do.
What have we done in the past? Jump in anytime, Council. What have we done in the past in order to account for those fees?
So, in prior years, prior to 18, what I can see in the one or two budget documents that I went back to, the revenue and expense line were equal. So, the net effect on your budget was zero.
Okay.
This year, in 2018, they weren't, that's not how they did it, so they are slightly different. Again, I don't know if it was a misunderstanding of how things were done. I wasn't here. But court tax revenue for the current year, you have $380,000, and the expense shows it to be $440,000. So, again, it's, they really, if you're going to, if they're even going to be in your budget, which they should not be in your budget, they're making you look like you collect a lot more revenue than you do, because they are not your revenue. They are just a pass-through.
But wouldn't, if it was showing that we were having more revenue than we do, wouldn't it have backed out in, you know, in the end? I'm not following.
The auditors just net it in the financial statements, so it doesn't change your budget document or your day-to-day, how y'all have been entering it. They just mushed the numbers in their financial statement.
Okay.
Because it's not your revenue, so they don't record it in your financial statements as revenue. So, most people record that activity on the balance sheet and then pay, like when you pay the quarterly fee to the state, you pay that quarterly payment to the state. There's a service fee you get calculated on it that's your money for collecting that money for the state. So, I'm also proposing that you can create that line item, which most city budgets have, that shows that money you're keeping that's your service fee for collecting that.
Well, Council probably needs to take a look at that and decide how they want to report that in the future. I guess I'm not smart enough to figure it out.
Again, it's just, it works, but it really makes you look like you have additional revenue that you don't have. So, if you were going out for grants, that affects your bottom line because it's not your revenue if they're using your budget document. People looking at your budget document think you...
I think Council should take a strong look at that and see how we want to do that in the future. Yes, sir? Douglas?
So, you're saying by reporting it as revenue, that becomes a negative for people who are looking to give us grants?
It could, yes. Again, it's, you've got 300, this year was 380 in court tax, which is state money, not your revenue. The Lumberger is 40,000. It's not your revenue. It is their money.
So, we looked a lot richer than we were.
Makes it look like, yeah.
And there was a couple of grants we probably didn't get because of it.
Yeah, it's possible, because some grants do look at your revenues.
Good point. I think, Mayor, it's just clear-cut transparency financially, so when you apply for those grants, again, you need to have that transparency for their review when you apply.
And I was just recently at a meeting with Finance Officers Association, Government Finance Officers Association of Texas. We do quarterly meet, I mean, excuse me, monthly meetings, just like TCMA does, and we had a round robin, and I asked, there was probably about 15 other cities, I mean, I've done this for many years, I've audited, I know how your auditor's doing it, and they're like, nobody does, it's not part of your revenue. And I'm like, okay, just kind of, so...
Okay. Yes, sir?
Ms. Vigans, did that carry through to the city's bottom line for last year? In other words, does that leave us with a positive showing of $400,000 we didn't really have at the end of the year?
Again, you have the expense, you're sending most of it to the state, so it, in your financial statements, they netted it, so it's only left, your portions only left in the revenues.
So, it doesn't leave us with a false positive at the end of the year?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had a quick clarification. Your suggestion is to possibly only show the fees that we keep as our revenue.
Yes.
That's the only line to leave on, and then take the other two and remove the other two.
And the expenses.
Because that's more standard practice for cities. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I had that clear. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Or if we're going to go forward, we make them equal so that don't, like this year's not equal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, permits, fees, inspections, and licenses. This one, I had a little bit, Janet helped me earlier, so she's not here, but in speaking with her, she said that y'all amended the fee schedule on April 30th, 2018, that regularly fees and expenses are monitored. She's seeing that there looks like there's similar new housing starts based on some vacant lots that are out there right now and demolitions that have been in discussion for the, as well. She said that she is, has been talking with lots of commercial roofers, that there's still a lot of commercial roofs and AC replacements due to the past weather we had in the last few years that have not all been completed, some aging of commercial properties, so those roofs are also just aging. So, at this time, we're not, and again, this is a preliminary night tonight, we have not, we're not looking to increase or decrease any of the permit lines. They all are coming in. You have permit inspection fees, $305,000, food licenses, $17,000, liquor licenses, $3,000, zoning plat fees, board of adjustments, $4,000, and then your impound slash registration, which all have been categorized before by, that's how you had them categorized, so, $1,000. Anything on permits? Again, anything you have or no? Okay, next slide, please.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. I have two on it.
Okay.
So, I was thinking there was two up there.
Okay, next one, residential garbage fees. Okay, so, residential rates, from what I've, we researched, and Janet says, your residential rates have not increased since 2010. However, landfill fees, when you take the garbage to the landfill, they've increased significantly since 2015. And they're also planning, it looks, when we were speaking to them, there's probably going to be another 4.5% to 5.5% increase between now and, I think it was going to be January, January. We haven't gotten the letter yet. Your landfill fees, they charge you based on, the first fee is a disposal, which is based on tonnage, and that fee has increased 25.6% since 2015. That's a pretty large increase. The environmental fee per load is, went from $4 to $24 in the same timeframe. The, you have a fuel surcharge fee that they charge on the tonnage dollar amount and the environmental fee dollar amount, and that percentage on fuel charge is updated every single Monday. So, that varies every single week. Not always, but looking at the voices, almost every single week. Then there's also regulatory cost recovery percentage of 3.6. Again, that's based on the tonnage fee and the per load. So, every time that fee increases, although that fee, that percentage itself hasn't increased over time, it's been 3.6, but because it's based on the dollar amounts of your tonnage and your environmental load, it increases. Waste management fee of 4.75, again, it's calculated on the same basis, so it's, when those two fees went up, it went up, even though its 4.75 is not. Then you also have TCU fees of .94 cents per ton. So, that's what makes up your entire bill from waste management when you take a trash that you pick up from residents.
Yeah. First of all, you have a word in here with a capital T, so I'm assuming it's not a weight, T-O-N?
Sorry, it is weight, yes.
What?
It's weight, like tonnage.
It's a weight, so it shouldn't be a capital T?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. The other thing is that you have in here, under residential garbage fees, wastewater management fee and TCU fee, which have nothing to do with garbage.
That's a fee that the wastes, that they charge, the landfill charges. I'm assuming, and I...
I'm sorry?
That is a fee that's charged by the waste management company.
Waste management company?
Mm-hmm. When you, where you take your landfill, I mean, where you take your garbage to the dump, that's part of the charges that they charge.
Well, what does TCU have to do with that?
I'm going to assume it's a regulatory fee they're required to pass on.
It adds to the fee. I'm familiar with that.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like your telephone bill.
Yeah.
For college.
What I assumed, yes.
Take care for the next 50 years.
Okay. And the wastewater one's probably because of the water going through the system somehow. I'm not sure. But that's what it's called on the water, on the bill, on the, every time.
We brought this up a number of years ago, and Rick, I think you addressed it, and it came to, kind of came to thought today, how much we actually charge when we pick up things. And Rick, are you still, you're still managing that? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Those are surcharge fees. Those are trying to help take out deficits for that cost. But as they have mentioned there, fees for franchisees, the commercial businesses come in, would help. And then also, well, I don't want to really increase the residential fee, but then that would also help that taking out a deficit with that. So, all this money that you have posted there for revenues, it fundamentally would help prevent that rate from going up on residential. And also to, also recycle bins are not included there, too. That's another cost that we actually take in and pay out of general funds that would help take care of those other deficits.
Where does the money go that you charge for the side fees?
It's in that, it is still in that line item down at the bottom, the $455,000. It's recorded to that same line item.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, so, sorry.
Yes, sir, Douglas? Hang on.
You have a line listed as sanitation department expenses. Is that the residential garbage fees?
No, that's the entire sanitation department budget.
So, that has...
The salaries.
So, that, that, it gives the impression, when you have it here as expenses when we're talking about fees, that fees have gone up exponentially, when it isn't necessarily that fees have gone up exponentially. Because 25, you can move something from $2 to $3 and say that was a 50% increase, and it looks horrendous. But if it goes from $2,000 to $3,000, that's a difference. But if sanitation department expenses includes salaries and things like that, that should be cut out from this line. If you're going to compare garbage fees with expenses, it should be cut out and shown the difference of the two.
Have we done that in the past?
You have a sanitation department budget, and to me, you're collecting garbage revenues. So, the two would be, I mean, you have your entire department, those employees, the cost of vehicles, the fuel, et cetera, are all part of collections, and so, that's what that is. And your revenue is all revenue that you collect, the Saws collects for you, because you don't bill on the residential homes, and then the cert, the extra, when someone has extra pickup, surcharge for, my understanding is brush, et cetera, those fees are billed and, or not billed at the, I believe, a hangar, and then that's brought to the city, and it goes into the same revenue line. It's not broken out into a different revenue line.
Okay.
So, that's this little chart below. So, now, up above, when I talk about landfill fees, this year, y'all have budgeted $95,000, but they are averaging about $100,000, excuse me, $10,000 a month, 10 to, between 10 and 12, because of the, how much it's increased, so you're looking at about 120. Again, if you're just going to cover that cost and the general fund's covering the rest, then you wouldn't have to necessarily raise residential rates. I just wanted to show you how the entire department, what the running of that entire department costs versus what your revenue is.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I've actually taken a look at this. I had an opportunity to go back and look at my water bills going back to 2010 because of an anomaly on mine this month. And in 2010, when we were with Bear Matt, we charged $21 for our garbage service. In 2011, 2012, the rates that were charged through Bear Matt went up to $25. And when we turned over to Saws, the first bill I could find with a garbage collection rate was $27.07, and that rate has stayed the same since 2012. So, for six years, we've been paying the same amount for garbage service, and in a two-year period, the price was increased $6.07. So, I think that that's certainly a prime area where we could make up some of this gain-loss if we took a look at what we need to do with those expenses, or those charges.
I think it's possible that the $27.07 includes the tax.
Okay, well, then, then...
It's based at 27.
So, it's still 25, then, but it's still a $4 increase within a two-year period, and then it's been stagnant then since 2011. So, that makes it a seven-year period that we haven't increased the rates, and our expenses have obviously gone up in that time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor, at the end of the day, I mean, we're trying to itemize the fees that possibly may incur future costs as we continue to provide, you know, garbage to one particular landfill. So, we just wanted to be able to itemize and show that the increasing fees are there. But at the bottom there is obviously just a holistic view of sanitation operations, because at the end of the day, it's an enterprise fund from that standpoint. So, we want to be able to show a holistic view of this to say, one affects the other from that standpoint.
I get it. I pay them myself in one of my businesses, so I get it. So, okay, are you good?
So, okay, are you good? Has there been any attempt to look to see whether or not the fees could be reduced if we went with a company to collect all the garbage? As opposed to individual people in the city?
We did that last year, Douglas, with the company up in Bernie. It's a big one up there, and we did the whole shebang. And what, what came out of it, and of course, you know, you're willing to go ahead and move forward with it and see if you can find somebody else, we're too small. Nobody wants us. You know, with the amount of money that they've got to put out in order to put those containers out there and, and stop, they would, they would put us on a, sort of a, it's not haphazard is the wrong word. But it would take our service to, to its knees. Where we get basically, you know, twice a week service, then we get once a week, yes, sir? Trash, and then we get that, they would, they would do it down to about once a week, trash service. Recycling would be one day, and trash, you can forget it.
So the larger we would be, the better. Has, have we ever looked into whether or not, other smaller cities are bound to be having the same problem?
They are.
Have we ever sought about combining a contract with several other small cities, making us a larger contract? And therefore the cost would go down?
I would welcome anything that anybody could do, but I will say this, that every time we've talked about doing this, service has been an issue. And what are we willing to give up? And, you know, personally, I'm not going to say that, we're in public. But all I got to say is this, you know, our recycling is costing us a ton of money. And that's because nobody's doing it. You know, half, half the city's not doing it. And, and why we even do it, I mean, we know why we do it, but we need to get some campaigns started in order to, to generate income. And get recycling and get, get a reason for people to do it.
Well, of course, the reason we, a lot of reasons we did recycling is for several years, up until the recession of '09, we were getting money for-
I know.
We recycle. And I've yet to understand why that's dropped to where we don't get anything. The economy is roaring ahead, and I would think that we would be getting money back.
Well, this company that we talked to last year, and I, I just don't think you remember because we were involved in it, basically said, you know, recycling is what saves you, sort of in the backend when you're, when you're doing this. Besides being too small is the fact that our recycling rate was under fifty percent. So, I don't know. You know, you go to other cities, Alamo Heights, ask him, he'll tell you what his recycling rate is. I don't want to quote it because it'd be better for him to quote it. Chavino Park, we just don't do it.
Chavino does not collect their own garbage, but Waste Management, they do pick up recycling, and if they sell it, they get a portion. And it's very little, just to be clear.
But it's service.
But they do get, but they don't service, they don't have their own, you know, someone else services it. So you do lose that personal touch, like you were saying. But recycling, like you said, education, if y'all can get the tonnage down that you're taking to the landfill, then your cost would go down. So, education.
Well, definitely, I'm sorry, I have to keep going.
In my name, okay, I have to, this, the way you all mentioned, if you try to go back and look at other side cases, yes, we would be very, very willing to do it, but definitely be a chance to do that. But remember, we have to pay, like you said, to all the hands and all that. It's a promotional start, but then after that, lock in and change it. Mention on the recycle, we do, as Mr. Gregory mentioned. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, the recycle, the recycling, we did pay for it, but unfortunately, we did not get paid for it as more, but the economy was under the merit. So that's why we have to start paying for it.
Yeah, I believe that was 2009 when the economy was in the tank.
And then we stopped signing checks, and Mrs. Harper started signing the checks, if I'm not correct, right? Because you didn't want to take care, you didn't want to sign the checks, which I felt was great, but the ma, the demand for recycle was not there. So, the, coming back to the last question, don't take more to the landfill, because the recycling plant is smarter than we are, okay? They're going to char, give you, charge that amount of money or pay, do you pay you for us to take it, correct? But then the landfill is going to charge you the difference. So the recycling company is always just going to stay under that number for the tonnage to go in.
Rick, we understand what you're saying, nobody's taking a shot at you. What we're taking a shot at is the fact that apparently the public doesn't want to recycle. They don't, they don't want us to pass a law where you can't talk on a cellphone. Castle Hills is the only city that you can talk on a cellphone and drive your car, okay? They don't want that law, okay? What they want is, they want things to kind of go along the way it, it has been. We got less than fifty percent recycling. It's the public that needs to come to the plate.
Right, well, as you say, we need to have a campaign for that to explain it. Because, I mean, I agree with Amy, you know, you can't keep charging the same amount if we're losing money. I mean, costs are going up, the garbage collection is extremely popular with most people, and they're used to it.
Mrs. McLean got the numbers right across the board, that's great. But you got to understand, look at history, Mr. Gregory. If you're looking, you've got revenue back for the tonnage of recycling that was planted there and given to the recycle.
Yeah, I understand.
And we're getting revenue for it, look at the history that we're dumping the same amount.
I understand that, but you just said that what it's doing is it's cutting down on what we put in the landfill, isn't that what you just said?
Recycling is.
It, it, we get charged for it, as Mr. Gregory is saying.
It's what?
We're being charged for the recycling because the demand for recycling.
Okay, so we shouldn't be recycling, is what you're saying.
No, wrong. Because then if you go and take it to the landfill, your cost comes out more. The recycling company knows to keep that number just a hair lower than what it would cost us to take it to the landfill. Yes, Miss McLean?
Okay, so basically, we shouldn't be recycling, is what you're saying? That's what I just understood.
We do, we do need to recycle. We have to show the residents that we're in that program for recycling, we don't want to be out of that. But if we do, and we tell the residents, "Don't recycle, put it in your trash," well, guess what? Then the landfill has that tonnage.
Well, that's what I just said, that's what I just said, and you interrupted me.
That's why the tonnage costs more. Versus taking it to the landfill. It stays low cost, but we pay to that. Go ahead, that's Miss McLean?
Right. Out in Los Alamos at Christmas, there was a lovely little magnet on my husband's aunt and uncle's microwave that had all the little things about recycling. So if it's education that's needed, I'm all on board, I always have more recycling than I do trash. And so I have looked up the other, there's forty-something recyclers in the county and in the surrounding area. And whatever education we need to do to reduce what's going to landfill, I'm happy to help with that.
All right, it's great, because I have Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts coming to my department. I have presentations on what the recycling program is allowed for. Everything and everything that comes out of the, at, bought the groceries, that is exactly all your recycle items. Anything without no recycling in them is it. But we are at great recycling program. I will tell you, I have more residents calling me saying, "I don't want to buy a recycle bin, Rick, but I want to recycle more." Guess what, use a trash can, put an R on it. It's at recycle day, the sanitation will not throw it away, they'll pick it up because it's right next to your recycle bin. I have some residents have four recycle, four trash cans and one recycle bin. But that's how much the program is involved with. We're not out of being involved.
It's not working. Let me ask you a question, Rick.
Yes.
If we didn't recycle at all, how would these numbers change?
Well, number one, your landfill costs would go up.
Okay.
That's why I always say, stay with the recycling, because the land, for taking it to the landfill costs less, but we're paying the recycle.
We get money back for recycling.
We don't.
Put it in that thing.
We, we, as you remember, you and I have been here long enough, we started recycling in six. We were getting six or seven, something like that.
I've been here for, since nineteen ninety-three, we've been recycling since nineteen ninety-three, that I know of before that.
What I'm saying, we were getting a check every month.
Oh, yes, definitely.
A substantial check every month.
Yes, sir.
And that meant a lot less was going into the landfill. Then the recession hit. Now, I don't know how many people were rec, were recycling ten years ago versus now, I don't know whether we're up or down. It seems to me, I would think it'd be probably the same. What is it that a recycling company said that we could no, we were pa, actually paying a recycling company there for a while, as when the recession was bad, and then we stopped?
It has nothing to do with the recession.
Okay, we have an answer.
Is there a way to get money for the recycled material?
Okay, I've tried every other way to get other monies for recycling. We had Beast of Fibers was our first recycling company, Green Star was our next company. Green Star is when you started actually paying, about, almost after the third year, you started paying checks to the, uh, Green Star. Now we have, now we have Waste Management, so now we're taking care of them. But like I said, I had recycle reps come over here, and this is what they tell us. The mandatory is not at want right now. They have ships of cargo recycling on standby if and when different areas need them. China the most, number one. But they're, they're, they just have them on stock, and guess what, they're going to win at the end. Because at the end, they're going to be able to make their price of what they have stocked on those, those ships ready to go out for cargo.
Because it's not about Castle Hills, it's about the nation. More people are recycling in the nation, too much paper, too much plastic, they don't know what to do with it.
But less money, no money getting to us. Instead, we're having to them to store it until it gets shipped to where it needs in the nation.
Okay, thank you, Rick. All right.
That a little bit?
I'm sorry.
Can I summarize that a little bit?
Of course.
Do I understand correctly that we have essentially two ways to cover our losses on the cost of picking up solid waste? One of them is to negotiate a lower rate if we can find one, or find another landfill if we can find one. That, that's right, those are the two things. We could, if we were, if we were able to control what people do, get everybody to participate.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, we don't have control of all those people.
Exactly right.
You could, you also, you do not have a franchise fee on commercial businesses. That's a possibility that you could charge a franchise fee. Some cities, you know, they, they only have one trash provider, and so that trash provider, there's a franchise fee and the city collects it on, basically all, all, excuse me, all trash that's, that's picked up. The franchise comes from that company. You could pass that, and again, you have lots of different trash companies servicing your commercial businesses. Within reason, the big companies, if you pass the franchise and you pass it on to them, they're going to pass it on to the commercial businesses, obviously.
If we wanted to raise fees, how much would it cost us to raise fees to pay off this twenty-eight thousand dollar deficit that we've got right now on this year's trash collection?
She's got the number.
I don't know what type of commercial business, how many businesses, and what type of revenue that generates.
If we were doing it just on residents, as we're doing it across the board, it would be an additional fee.
Oh, if you did it on residents, what I figured earlier would be approximately, I think it was like a dollar fifteen a month increase? If, if you have about a thousand five hundred residential homes.
A dollar fifteen a month?
No.
Approximately.
Twenty-three dollars a month.
No, no, that twenty-eight divided-
Wait, divided by, you're right.
By twelve. By thousand five hundred divided by twelve. Yeah. So, I mean, again, but the, you know, the franchise fee is something you really should consider. I mean, that's a pretty normal thing across the state of Texas. Those trucks are coming in on your roads, those trucks are, you know, drop oil, that's the reason for the franchise fees, to help pay for other things. So, could also help cover the cost.
Is that trans, trans, tran, franchise, franchise fee used in other cities in this area?
Every city I've ever been at, we collected it from.
And I wanted to clarify one more point. If we can increase our recycling, get more people to recycle, that is a good thing, yes? Because the recyclers are charging slightly less to take that than the landfills. I want to make sure very clear on that, yes?
Yes, I mean, at the end of the day, if we can improve our recycling by majority of our households, it's going to reduce that total tonnage going to the landfill and that overall cost per tonnage. I mean, that's the bottom line.
Okay. It just kept getting tossed back and forth both ways. But what I was hearing Mr. Arata say was that increased recycling is going to reduce our cost going to landfill, and that's a good thing. So we definitely need to look into that as well. Yes, but if they charge less than taking it to the landfill, it's still a good thing.
Well, I think, again, operationally, we need to look and analyze recycling as a whole right now, from that standpoint, and bring something back to council for review.
So maybe we ought to talk about that at our town hall meeting coming up on the public hearing, on, on the budget.
And again, twenty-five percent increase in landfill fees since 2015, that's a huge jump. Just, I mean-
It is, well, and the fact that we have not had an increase as a resident in seven years, that, that's pretty amazing as, as well. So it looks like there's multi ways to attack this. So if we look at it all the way around, we can find a good solution that will make sure that we're covered for-
All right.
For year and years to come.
And again, as we're providing these preliminary revenues, we wanted to bring and highlight some of the major ones we feel that really need some review. And this is one right now, being the sanitation fund.
I think it'd be important when we're going through this to make sure that as we go through it, we find ways and suggestions in order to, we just found out it's going to cost a dollar and ninety-nine cents to, per month, per household in order to fix this.
Dollar fifteen.
When you are paying this landfill fee, Rick, that includes brush and leaves? Okay, so I just wanted to mention once again, that I made the suggestion several years ago, if we got a mulching machine, we could lower that substantially. Because we could have a pile of mulch available that people would come and pick up, and it would be enormously popular. They do that in San Antonio, there's no reason we can't do it.
You know what, I agree a hundred percent on that. But, and, and the question I have, and I'm, and I'm asking myself this question, as the mayor, where would we put that? Right over there? Okay. All right. Yeah? Yeah, okay, I get it. Okay.
Again, Mayor, that's something obviously we can take into consideration for this budget as well.
Well, I think we should talk about it in our town hall meeting, so we can get some answers to some of this and not take forty-five minutes to decide. It takes a dollar and ninety-nine cents to solve the problem. Okay, let's move on. What are we, we're talking about, thanks, Kip, for bringing that up. Next.
Next slide? Thank you. So the remaining, again, you, you've got a pretty short revenue list of line items. So the remaining revenue line items at this time, and I'm still, we're, we're not proposing any increases, except for interest. It does appear, based on the balances, that you, there will be an increase. Again, you have, interest rates can fluctuate, but at least for the next six to nine months, I think you're safe. And then passport acceptance fees, where, as we go few, next few meetings, we'll discuss that farther, further. And that's all your revenue line items that you have in the general fund.
Okay.
And then next, the next slide is just-
Yes, sir?
Sorry.
I may have missed it, I want to ask. Why is court income declining so much? And why is the step income staying the same inasmuch as the population of San Antonio has increased? So dramatically, the number of cars would be greater, I would think the step program would increase, and I would think that the court income would increase. Why do you have it declining and remaining the same?
I, I think that the court income last year was just increased too much, the 2018 budget. So when you look at a fi, the five-year, you know, five-year, you know, average, court income is at five hundred and nineteen for a five-year average. So, again, I wasn't here for the budget process, I just think it might have been increased slightly too much.
And the step program being a zero-sum game?
It, it's, it's still following, your, your five-year average was a hundred and seventy, and your budget is two hundred, I think you're reasonable right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas.
Again, as we go-
Go ahead.
Let me change. But good questions. So then the next slide is just, it's just these, all your revenue lines grouped, I guess you could say. You have your property tax, which we've yet to be determined, sales tax, I just went ahead and put that in there at a hundred thousand, court income. So the court income went from six eighty to six twenty-five. But it also has the state, the service fees included in that. Then you have franchise fees. I didn't do a slide on franchise fees because I didn't really think there was a need. That's electric, gas, phone. electric, gas, phone, um, to do, do a blank, uh, cable. Yeah, yes, so franchise fees, based on your five-year history, it, you've collected significantly a, a larger amounts. I think your budget number might, they just might have been trying to play it safe, but I don't really know why. So I've increased that, I would say you could increase it 45,000. Again, we didn't do any changes to the residential garbage fees, permit fees we didn't change, warrants, um, again, I think they just, were just increased slightly too much, so that went down. Step, leaving loan, and then your other items that we just talked about, right now, we're not putting any changes to them. That could change. Again, this is preliminary, we've, we've started working on this in the last few weeks, so.
Does anybody have any questions on the income summary slide? If not, we'll go ahead and move forward to department presentations, beginning with the police department. Most of this is just an update. If anybody doesn't have a packet, we can provide you one. If you do, I'll continue while he works on that. No objections? Counsel, if you're following along, I'll continue. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Successful warrant initiative, our model's been deployed in sister cities after consulting with us and how, and how we're approaching ours. So we're, we're certainly grateful for that. Organization, we recently hired two officers. Councilman Gregory, you asked how court revenue could be down. I could also offer that, um, when you're training two new officers, essentially you're down four officers from, from total productivity, whatever that might mean. Uh, again, we don't, we don't dictate how many traffic stops or what the results of those traffic stops are, but it's obvious that if four officers are, are less productive because there's a training, uh, situation taking place for three to four months, that you can expect to probably see some decreases in some of those areas to include step, that could be a byproduct. You know, and I could, I could also point to several other things, but also it's sometimes just cycling. But anyway, I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Johnny, I saw they were very busy giving tickets to Northwest Military the other day. Stopping everybody.
They're still doing their thing, yes ma'am. That's for sure, and, um, and we're, we're proud to have them out there doing what they do, that's for sure. We still continue to get the reimbursement for the HIDA position. We are still recognized as a top-tier training hub. Currently, we've got FBI LITA, the Trilogy Program, Leadership Trilogy Program going on again this year. This is our fifth year in that partnership with those folks. As such, uh, this year, we'll save approximately $4,000 in training because by being a host agency for this program, we get free slots to go. It's certainly a win-win, and then we get the top-tier education for our officers out of it. Leadership program that, that other agencies couldn't, uh, most of them can't, can't bring in or can't get that partnership established, as we have, because of our geographic location central here in San Antone. Also, by, byproduct of, of this partnership, all of our administration patrol sergeants have graduated with that trilogy, all tenured corporals, and that just excludes the most recently promoted, and all senior officers have graduated as well. We're currently sending detectives, and then we will begin to send officers as they promote through, you know, come up through the ranks or obtain seniority. Workflow statistics, real quickly, I just wanted to point out about five categories on two slides. First one, uh, contains narcotics arrests and patrol buys. If you look at the last, um, chart, or the last, yeah, the last chart on the graph there, 2018, you'll see that for most of those, uh, graphs there, 2018 is higher than 15, 16, slightly lower than 17. Again, I believe this is attributable to those officers being in training for a good portion of 2018. And I would still note that there are also still increases from, from recent years besides last year at this point. And worth noting, those are, uh, that's a lot of arrests and narcotic cases coming out of this city. Yes, ma'am.
Johnny, are these numbers, or Chief Siemens, are these numbers comparing?
You're fine.
To the same, same point in the year?
Can you back up, Steve?
From 2015, 16, 17, and 18, is this to the same point in the year?
Yes, ma'am. I, I stopped it at June 29th, which was the last month of reporting for us, as, obviously, we're in July still. So I, I stopped it there rather than going day-to-day because there is a lag, so we wanted to stop at a clean point, similar to the financials, I guess, same argument there. But yes, ma'am, they're, they're apples to apples. Uh, again, I, I submit to you that it's gonna be the officers in training and being down three officers, you know, essentially all of this year with one, with a military commitment. Really, I could argue four officers are down when you have two in training and one away, two training officers. However, they're not down, and, I mean, it's not down anything I'm concerned with because it's, it's still very negligible and they're extremely high numbers, productive-wise, productivity-wise. I cases are investigated cases, and those are cases that are investigated as a result of those arrests or narcotics cases, or any other case that's reported to our agency. And, uh, they are certainly holding their own. I think that this will continue to trend, obviously, in a slightly upward positive trend, uh, whether it's positive to have more investigated cases, I, I, I don't agree with that necessarily, but I can, I certainly see it continuing in that, in that trajectory. Yes, sir.
Is there a geographical area where most of these incidents are occurring?
You know, I.
Is it coming from north of the city or over where it is?
Well, there's not a whole lot of narcotics coming out of Elizabeth Ann and, and the gardens over there. It's difficult to assess that, but I would certainly say that the, the perimeter streets and 410, of course, provide us some, the lion's share of, of those narcotics cases in particular. The arrests come anywhere, that could be a contact at a job site, or at a Walgreens, or at this HEB, I mean, that, those are pretty, uh, unisolated. And as far as the traffic stops and narcotics cases related to those, they're likely on that, uh, as a result, result of the SB 631 agreement with San Antone and, um, and, uh, just the, uh, the caliber of officers that we, we employ here and their proactive approach to, to upholding the law, enforcing the law.
Is a narcotics case somebody who's selling, is that what you're talking about?
They could be selling, using, holding, uh, giving it away for that matter, it's a possession charge. In fact, I think we got a gram and a half today of methamphetamines, uh, which is a pretty good, pretty good stop. We often get a lot more than that, but it was a pretty good stop for a daytime, uh, expired registration, I think is what it was. And that, and you know, again, it's, it's the caliber of officers that we employ, these folks are out there, there's a lot to the interview process, and I don't want to get in those weeds too far, but it's, it's the caliber of officer on those traffic stops that are asking the right questions and getting a feel for, for who they're dealing with. If that, if that helps. And, but councilman, we could probably look into that if you wanted to know more specifically, and I could chart that if it would, if it would, uh, help with, help you with anything. And lastly, total police calls, we're currently on, on schedule to, to probably come in at about 26,000. The second half of the year's historically heavier, so I expect that to be higher than that, closer to 2017's though, for what it's worth. Update on the seizure fund, 2019 seizure funds, these are Fund 13. State seizure fund is a balance of 64, 269, 16. Federal seizure fund balance is 275, 203, 56. That program, as you can see, uh, has been successful as well, and, uh, you know, we, it's no secret that we hope to, hope to, uh, mutually, all of us collectively, work towards some type of building improvement or new building down the road with that fund, as we've, as we've discussed before, Councilman Gregory. Anyway, those are governed by the Code of Criminal Procedure, Chapter 59, as most of you already know, restricted uses as such, but, uh, there, there are a number of uses there. 2019 general fund budget proposal, operational budget will remain neutral for the second consecutive year. You'll see an increase in utilities of $3,000 to offset some internet costs that, that the area has, has seen as a whole for the fiber, and you'll see a decrease in gas, oil, and tires of 3,000, the same amount, keeping the budget neutral. There are some required salary increases as part, uh, of our step increases to officers that are, have not promoted to corporal. There are five step increases associated with that, and I believe there are five officers, they account for that $13,000 increase in salaries, which is, which is pretty nominal on the dollar amount for salaries. This is a non-cola proposal, I'd like to be very clear with that, not, it's to be determined, of course, but I'm not, I'm not lumping that in there, sir, so please.
Where do we get our gasoline?
We, we get it anywhere really that has a fuel man card, and we've looked, we've considered other options as we had talked about, uh, last year, or earlier this year during the gas crisis, um, whether or not we could partner with CPS down the road here or somewhere else, but right now, we get it at any gas station that will, service station that will provide a fuel man, or take a fuel man card, rather.
'Cause I just see this, a 20 cent per gallon difference between the HEB and the Shell station.
Yes, sir, ours is a contracted price, and I think Laura would be more equipped to talk about that, to talk to you, speak to that. Maybe, sorry, Laura.
Is the con, is the contracted price good everywhere or just where you're buying the gasoline?
And I haven't looked at Fuel Man in a while, but they usually, it is a price that's contracted with, Fuel Man has a price they charge, the, so.
No matter where you purchase.
No matter where you purchase it.
Your fuel at.
There is, there, Fuel Man is not the state contract, and a few cities that I've, I know recently have moved to the state contract, which it's, it's just like Fuel Man, it's a different credit card, different type of credit card, but it's through the state, and people have seen some savings. Again, you can go anywhere, so, might be something to consider to look, but not that much of a savings. The larger you city are, the more it is, but.
We have verbally discussed, talking to the school district and the ISD, seeing if there's something that we can get in with them, and you know, and they have the larger, uh, storage tanks for their buses and, you know, things of that nature, but it's in infancy stages at this point. All right. Crime control operating budget, 2019, of course. Operational budget will remain neutral, again, for the second consecutive year, much in the same vein as the operational budget for, uh, the general fund has. We will, you'll see an increase in community programs driven by council, or, excuse me, crime control, uh, district members, as well as, as ourselves, we'd like to see that increase. And you'll see a decrease with the SWAT ammo line item of the same amount, remain, keeping a budget, ensuring a, a neutral budget. There are some assigned and allocated funds going forward, as most of you know or, or currently educating yourselves on. We have radios, patrol cars, video equipment, MDTs, traffic vehicles, and CID vehicles, all of these make up the lines, take up the lion's share of that, of that crime control budget. That said, Captain, if you'll switch to the next one, please. 2019, we will be making purchases from three of those, which includes patrol cars, video equipment, and MDTs. Currently for patrol cars, we have about 117,500 allocated as a, assigned, and by the end of year 2018, 175,000. Video equipment, 37.5, current, end of year, 50,000. MDTs, 27,000 and some change, end of year, 36,000. These are allocations that have been made, uh, historically for these big-ticket items, and have been, uh, very efficient in how, in how we exercise spending that money, and I think it pays us dividends in upkeep and maintenance and things of that nature by staying on these types of cycles. Those are the three items that will be, large items that will be purchased out of crime control, in addition to whatever supplement to the general fund budget as normal that we, that we experience. And that concludes, no, excuse me, one more fund, if you will look at the next one, please. Leo's Fund, Fund 18, this is law enforcement officers, oh, man. It's for education, it's for training, it's the Leo's Fund, it's been around for a while, it's not a brand-new fund. We do apply for it annually, and typically, we are awarded, it's not guaranteed, though, uh, to my knowledge. That said, these funds are monies distributed by the state to law enforcement for continuing education, they are not designed to supplement general fund training budgets, which we are, use ours quite delicately and efficiently, anyway. That concludes the budget proposal for 2019 for the police department. Any other questions?
Is there any questions by council? Yes, sir.
We've spoken in the past, Chief, about, uh, community outreach, in particular in areas where we really don't have a lot of influence, on the other side of Jackson Keller, for example, or in the areas where some, where the majority of, of our petty crime appears to originate. And I'm wondering if, if this would be the time to bring that up and add it to the next year's budget for the, for CCPD program.
I, I think that's part of it, I, um, we should probably have some more dialogue to that between now and August, Councilman. The reason I suggest that is we may want to discuss what we think will be most effective rather than, rather than just throw things at the wall and see what sticks. But I do agree with you that it's something needs to be, can and should be done, I think that was part of this initiative. What we had in mind with this was increasing our national night out parties, even if we were hosting, somebody here from our agency or a volunteer, as you and I discussed, uh, as you all know, our officers are gainfully employed and don't have a lot of spare time, but, uh, if we could coordinate and sponsor a block party for some of those apartment complexes and things of that nature where we, uh, try to build these relationships. Now, we do that with our, with our police contacts anyway, through a professional police contact. I do see some issues, it's a transient population, and by that, I mean, maybe they're six months if, if some of them aren't, you know, asked to leave early. So you're, it's, it, it takes, you gotta get it established and continue it, and I think it is well worth looking into, sir.
How big a factor are gangs in these areas?
I'm sorry?
How big a factor are gangs in these areas?
There's certainly some, some gangs there. Now, we don't have the population that we clearly identify, and they're not tagging to that extent identifying themselves, in other words, but there's, you can bet that there's gangs, whether they are formal street gangs or loosely running groups of guys that, you know, go out and perpetrate crimes against citizens.
Doesn't the DA's office have a gang control unit?
Yes, sir. San Antone has, has a gang, gang control office, or, uh, task force, as well as Bear County, and they're primarily focused on the east side where we led the nation in homicides earlier in the year, sadly.
Do they have any information that might be useful in the areas right around Castle Hills?
Yeah, we have, we have contacts that we maintain with those folks and don't get a lot of, uh, a lot of awareness to what's, I mean, just because it's not that prevalent in, in this specific area. We probably make more stops on prison gang members just, you know, randomly than we do on street gang criminals that are, that we contact on a, on a self-initiated contact. But they're certainly there, I'm not disputing that.
Yeah. I, I don't really know what the, what the gang involvement may be, but for the benefit of council, I talked to Chief Siemens earlier about the fact that, that a lot of our petty crime and the crimes of opportunity, burglaries or theft of equipment or stuff from the yard, that kind of thing, appears to come from, uh, the surrounding area, not, not in our city necessarily, but the areas surrounding our city where there are, um, what you might call ghettos or low-income housing projects or things of that sort, where people have very little opportunity. It occurred to me, and what I spoke to Chief Siemens about was that we may be able to do good for our own community by doing good for those people outside our community. If we can find a way to offer them other alternatives to spend. them other alternatives to spend their time, youth activities, programs of that sort, maybe some, some kind of a job program, anything at all that we can do to make their situation better, is also bound to make our own situation better with regard to petty crime in Castle Hills. That's what I was aiming for. And maybe we can talk about it more before August.
I think it warrants that, sir. And I also think that you all can use your sphere of influence to reach your contacts with your, your, uh, colleagues in other, I guess, San Antonio, there really isn't another city, perhaps, Valcones, but, uh, and see what resources are available to us as well. But I, I appreciate the interest. Any, anybody else? Thanks.
Thank you, Johnny.
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Chief, for your leadership, and thank you for your officers protecting us in the community.
You bet.
Uh, with that, police, uh, we have Public Works and Mr. Harada's ready for his presentation as well.
Okay.
Rick.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, and residents of Castle Hills. I'm here for the presentation of the Public Works for two thousand nineteen, and proposed budget. Well, here it shows the presentation goals, or the goals of this presentation, to inform the general public of the Public Works budget, operations, and use of taxpayers' dollars. This is intended to show the importance of having motivation, motivated, and all well-trained Public Works team, as well as maintaining and affecting equipment and vehicles in order to provide the quality service to the residents. Public Works over, I'm sorry, Public Works overview. This will show what the Public Works Department takes care of, the three divisions, um, that I maintain there, and that would be on, uh, the streets, the thirteen employees total. Uh, it shows one full-time Public Works Director, one admin, a street division, full-time employee of two vacancies, building maintenance of the janitorial service that takes care of the City Hall, and then a project manager that, uh, is in line for. And then sanitation drivers, we have two full-time employees, sanitation collectors, four employees, and then animal control division is as needed. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, you can stop me. Public Works-
Cal? Oh, go ahead.
Public Works expenses and revenue. So, Public Services produces the following revenue. There's, as you can't mention, Mr. Tim, the surcharge of fees. You'll see what we brought over in two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. So, it's a, um, a revenue. Um, but hopefully can help, take that deficit of those sanitation fees, that's one of them. And then also abatement fees that we do, um, to maintain any co-compliance matters that are, are brought in by, um, residents or, or co-compliance, that we have to bait the property, mowing, moving of this, you know, debris for the public not to see. This, this will all involve abatement fees. Animal control, registration, cage rentals. This is what we normally bring in on, on a yearly basis for impoundment, animal boarding. Next slide, please. Street operations. This involves to tell you what the street team does and performs hourly, out in the field. As you can see, it shows the hours of, uh, mowing, seventy-two hours, sixteen hours per month on minor street repairs, sixteen to twenty-four hours on, on, uh, month on sign maintenance. That's for street signs, fixing up, um, streets that are damaged through somebody having an accident. The street functions come across here, and that means street, minor street repairs on cold patch repair, crack sealing on streets, seal coating, minor paving project contracts, street signs, installation, maintenance and replacement, cleaning and sediment removal on the drainage ditches, coverts, mowing and trimming, the cleaning of the easements. This would be along the frontage roads or empty lots that we maintain. Watering of subdivision monuments. If you look at different areas, they have the monuments that take maintaining of the foliage there. Graffiti removal, um, that would be in your drainage coverts, painting over them or removing stop, uh, traffic signs that have any graffiti. Surcharge collections that was just mentioned a minute ago, various abatements and duties on private properties, put up and take down barricades during storm, storms, and the janitors, janitorial services for the City Hall and the Police Department.
Yes, sir.
You actually spend more time per month on sign maintenance than on minor street repairs?
Uh, we do. We do a lot of that stuff. We turn on the activity report. As you look on your activity reports on the council meetings, it'll show you all the stuff that we do on street repairs, mowing, anything and everything that we, we do on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. Street fleet equipment. Street fleet equipment is used out there daily, provided by the city services. We have a dump truck, nineteen ninety-eight GMC, a field, uh, truck, a two thousand and six, that's our three fifty. That's our biggest field truck that we have. A field truck that we have, or, uh, the animal control truck is a two thousand and eight F-150. And then the last truck would be my truck, to take, um, back and forth on what has to be done for residents. Equipment used daily to provide city services. We have the tractor, the two thousand seventeen Kubota we just purchased here in the last year, the water trailer in nineteen ninety-three, a tandem trailer that we use for barricade, and transporting of a ride mower in different areas of the city on empty lots. And then we have the crack sealer machine, a Craftco, nineteen ninety-eight. Yes, sir.
I noticed today a rather large machine you had, cutting the grass on the, uh, near the, um, red brick wall. That, that, oh, huge machine. Is that not included in this?
Yes, sir. That's a tractor, the two thousand seventeen. It has, has a five-foot shredder in the back. It also provides a backhoe, also provides a box grader. There are five accessories that stick to that tractor.
Do you need a Bobcat?
I would like a Bobcat. That would be nice. But there's, there's other, there's other wishes that I have that I was gonna come across down the line when I come to-
Some of the problems you've seen on North Mountain and a few other places, that people have said if you-
The tractor can do that, sir.
Tractor can do it, okay.
Yes, it has, it has a front loader in the front bucket. Next, any other questions? Next slide, please. As you can see, you'll see the Public Works team out there, you know, getting and prepping for crack sealing. This was, uh, done off of the West Avenue intersection, all the way from four-ten, all the way to Locksville-Selma, hopefully getting ready for the seal coat that was gonna be provided, uh, in the, in the, the proposal that was given by Mountain near. Next. And there's a slideshow of, um, the maintenance they do on, uh, cutting of the drainage ditches. This is one that's right there next to the Blanco, um, road in Cass Hills, uh, that they, they maintain. And then the other one down there at the bottom would be, or at the very top right, that would be the four-ten frontage road, right behind the Wedgewood, excuse me, the building, um, where HEB Credit Union used to be at. Any, next slide. Drainage cleanouts. Now, you can see the sediment that's being removed here. This is the drainage covert between Blewitt and Jackson Keller. As you can see, after our storms, we have all this sediment that washes off the streets, and then it has to be removed after mostly on the storms. Next slide, please. Application for EM cold patch. This is what we do, we purchase the, the cold patch for, and we do sectionals, or we do even potholes. It's holding a stockpile there at the Public Works in the backyard, and we use it as needed. Um, this is a, kinda like, um, signs of graffiti removal that were vandalized, mostly happens during our spring break, summer break, like, um, Thanksgiving, Christmas breaks. That's when we mostly get hit with all these. Next slide. Wall graffiti under the, on the frontage road, uh, excuse me, on the four-ten frontage road, going eastbound and westbound, I have to take care of. And then you see sometimes on the monument, the inside going of, this is the one going off of Blanco and Cass Hills. This sometimes gets hit, or even the one on Jackson Keller. I have paint that matches all that up, so then this way, when I go back and have to fix that, I only have to paint it where it matches the existing paint, where you'll see San Antonio are taking in paint that people are throwing away, and then they paint over the graffiti and make a nice chalkboard for the next graffitiers. Next slide. Sanitation budget. So, we run a two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar, uh, budget on daily operations. We have a, three sanitation trucks. We have the two thousand and nine Sterling, the sanitation truck, the two, twenty thirteen International, and the last truck, the sanitation truck, of the twenty-seven International. Now, this is where I'm gonna come in and chat a little bit about one of my, um, slides that I didn't put in. It's my fault unless I did put it in, but we're looking to see about getting in a new truck for that Sterling to do the replacement. And it'll also be an International, 'cause they don't make the Sterling model no more. Um, but that's gonna be one of the, um, priorities on my list for a new vehicle. Next slide, please.
I'm gonna chime in real quick. That, um, he did give us information about the vehicle and, uh, the, the truck, trash truck. And then there is money all set aside, so, in your contingency fund. So, it was around eighty-five thousand, I believe. There was, give or take, we're still working on numbers, but there is money set aside in your oh-nine fund. So, I believe that it would be a hundred percent from there.
Yes, thank you, Laura. That, that she'd probably put in your packets on the both, um, companies that I went with, with Grundy Ford and Santex International. And the numbers that are be provided there, as she mentioned, there's gonna be monies budgeted available for that. Okay, sanitation division functions. They've got the garbage collection, brush and leaf collection, and recycle collection. Sanitation does, and the sanitation team services over fifteen hundred homes here per week. Collections run at probably about twelve to fourteen tons of garbage per collection day. Collections on ten to fifteen tons per, of brush and leaves, and then collections of four to six tons on recycling. Next slide, please. Animal control budget is twenty-five hundred. Animal control team picks up and processes animals for impoundment and provides daily care. Animal control functions, we pick up domestic dogs and cats running at large. We pick up wildlife for rescue, dog bite quarantines, individual agency adoptions, and daily feeding and care for the shelters. Next slide. Let's see, one of our rescues getting picked up here and taken into, um, impoundment. Next slide. You'll see some of the wildlife that we take, uh, in. These are some owls that we, that fell out of a tree. And then Jeanette actually fed them raw meat until we could find a rescue group that Janet actually helped us with, that actually taken nothing but birds. Very good outcome. Special services. The Public Works team has received many compliments from the residents for extra services they provide. Regular pickup garbage at homes of residents who are physically unable to take care, that take their cans to the streets. Install large Christmas tree and decorations each year. Install lighting and clean, mow grounds at the commons for special events, Crime Prevention Night, Fiesta, and other Fiesta festivals. With, assess with improvements of subdivision monuments. Install the street clock in the front of the commons and restore the common sign. You'll see one of the slides here of the Christmas tree going up in the wreaths, that go up on the, on the streetlight post in front of, um, the City Hall and the commons. Next slide, please. Then you'll see some other work that gets done. They, they do the manicuring or maintaining of the mowing in the commons on, pretty much on a bi-weekly basis here. It grows sometimes, Johnson grass. Then when you see a tree limb that fell down over there off of Camaria, uh, excuse me, this is off of Lock Haven, that fell down, and it was blocking traffic. So, PD called us on this, and you'll see one of the street signs that we're putting up there. That's on East Castle Lane. Next slide. That's it. Any questions?
Um, yes, Mr. Harada, I do have a question. Many years ago, I seem to remember that we had a street sweeper. Um, did we have one at one time?
Yes, miss, from nineteen ninety-three up until nineteen ninety-five. After nineteen ninety-five, it stopped working. Then we started looking at, seeing about purchasing another one. We hadn't even a resident who was actually donating a hundred and sixty thousand to help provide for the cost of it, but a hundred and sixty thousand wasn't enough. It needed to be almost like three hundred and ten thousand dollars to purchase one. And then we also looked at the, as, as well, disposal fees that would include sweeping up the streets, they would have to pay for. But yes, miss, we did, and then we have never gotten another one.
Okay, thanks.
Can I address that?
Yes.
Um, actually, it turns out that the cost of the tree, street sweeper is so substantial that it's actually cheaper to contract a street sweeping service to come in, and, and Saws does that, and they're available. So, we could act-
You're, you're, you're right. And we, we've already done that. We went looking for, Mr. Bandywell had me do that. And we got a good cost, but, and different, different, um, companies, but the only thing that came into play was the landfill cost.
The what?
The landfill cost. They charged more for their disposal versus our disposal, because they have, like, the fees Mrs. Laura had up there, they have those concerns that come from the streets of oil and things like that. Any other questions?
Skip, you got anything?
Yes, um, how many days a week do you actually do collections?
All five days, sir. Monday through Friday.
Say again?
All, all five days, Monday through Friday.
Five days, that's kinda what-
Monday and Tuesdays, I mean, excuse me, Monday, Monday-
You mentioned that you get-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You mentioned that you get twelve to fourteen tons per collection day.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just wondering if we collect every day-
Monday and Thursdays are south side, Tuesdays and Fridays are north side. Wednesdays is recycle, I mean, brush and recycle, and then Thursday's trash and recycle.
You know, Skip, we've talked about in the past years, and, and cutting back and things like that, and, uh, the uproar was, maybe, maybe the public's ready for that now if they wanna cut services.
I don't know. I think we, we've got a short, a deficit this year, twenty-eight thousand dollars, probably similar or something next year. But that works out, if, if you divide it up just among residences, that's about a dollar sixty-four a month.
Agreed. I think, I think that's a possibility. We, we, you bet they do.
We've always tried to look-
I think the two biggest things in this town was taking away services and not talking on a cellphone. Remember when we tried to pass that, Douglas?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we tried to pass a law not to talk on the cellphone. I thought it was the end of the world.
Isn't it state law?
No.
Didn't bother me. Nobody ever calls me, anyway.
I, I got a ticket the other day. I had to remind the policeman, you're in Castle Hills, you can't give me that ticket. He said, "Oh, sorry." Drove off.
You know, we look at, across the board, to keep, trying to keep residents from having to pay, which is a good thing. And we try to go through automated services, getting those numbers. You look at other cities, our sister cities, and look what we provide as services for, um, the, the fast service they have. Number one, the sanitation, and all that involves police and fire. But you, like I said, you go to municipalities, and they find out they have it subbed out and contracted. Yes, like I said, it might be good for the first year, and then after that, it goes hiked up. But then, we, like I said, also too, you gotta look at bringing this automated service in. We looked at the other concern. Guess what? Our alleys are too narrow. They would have to actually bring the residents who are alleys, they would have to bring it to the street. So, then we have other concerns, other residents not able to bring it to the street, 'cause they're taking it from a short distance to their backyard alley. But then, guess what? We have more wear and tear in our streets. So, guess what? We have to put more money into our program for, for servicing our streets with milling overlays down, 'cause they're gonna get wear and tear with the two axles that these trucks carry. We only have one axle.
What, what did you do when you rescued the baby owls? What did you do with them?
As I mentioned, Janet found a bird rescue group, and Jeanette and I took them to that rescue group.
Because, because Wildlife Rescue consistently says that you're not supposed to rescue birds at the parent's-
They fell, they fell, they fell down from the tree, and you're right, but they told me to go ahead and put them back up, and I was like, "Well, they're gonna fall down again." "Oh, no, go ahead and put a nest a little bit lower."
Right.
"Okay, so guess what? We have nice kittens that are gonna have a nice meal." I didn't want that happening, so that's why I kept the birds there. And then we took them over.
What? What happened?
We took them to the rescue group. Yeah, that's why I say they fell down. Wildlife Rescue did not one accept them. They told me to place them back up at the net, and I said, "Nest," and I said, "Wait, they're gonna fall back down." He says, "No, make another nest a little bit in between."
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, and then I said-
A resident told you to do that?
No, Wildlife Rescue.
Oh.
And then I said, "The cat's gonna have a nice meal," so that's why I brought them over here, and we fed them until we found a place. Yep.
Three hundred miles, I raise coons.
We rescued those, we rescued birds, we rescued, I'll rescue residents, I have to, I guess. Go ahead.
Rick, what is the percentage increase of your budget this year from last year?
Well, although I don't get a slide.
Right now, um, there's only one line item that he's, we've, that he's asked to increase, which is based on the boom for the Christmas tree lights. Um, we have not- We have not, and Ryan, City Manager, is going to talk a little more about salaries and other things, but he hasn't asked for any increases in his budget. We haven't gotten to that.
No colas. I've put it in my budget without no colas, sir, right now.
All right. Thank you, Rick, very much for your presentation, and as a follow-up to Rick's department, I think, and as well as this meeting, that there's some areas that obviously we need to analyze and review in our sanitation department, obviously recycle, brush, and landfill fees, obviously see some better ways we can partner, maybe look at some contracting. So there's some evaluations that we need to do as we move forward in completing the budget. Our next slide here, that we have here, just wanted to itemize additional budget items for future considerations. We'll get into the property tax assumptions, as Mr. Gregory just asked, future cola from that standpoint, obviously salary adjustments to be determined, and once we have a better picture of, of the total revenue, we'll be able to evaluate those things as well. Right now, in the budget, there's no additional positions. We're working on, eventually, we'll get the health insurance rerate, any future capital equipment we'll evaluate, future capital projects, additional evaluation of expense and revenue line items, and then eventually, we'll tackle some special revenue funds as we move forward through the budget. The next slide, sorry.
Okay.
Again, I just, oh, sorry. The next slide is just the calendar here. Next Tuesday night, we're going to go over the fire department, administration in court, effective rollback, effective and rollback calculations provided by the tax assessor. And then, the Wednesday, August eighth, we have a designated meeting for a special city council meeting for the third budget workshop, where we'll submit the proposed two thousand nineteen budget, discuss the tax rate, and then take record votes, schedule public hearings. Now, Tuesday, August fourteenth, and Tuesday, August twenty-first, are just placeholders for future council meetings in case we need to have any additional budget workshops moving forward. And then, as I said earlier, Mayor, we have Tuesday, September eleventh, and Tuesday, September eighteen, excuse me, Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, for the special city council meeting budget workshop, hold first tax hearing, and then the two meetings in September.
Me, how many people are on Ustream right now?
A whopping five.
Five? A whole five? Thank you, you five out there.
And Mayor, as I mentioned, or as Ms. Vigans mentioned earlier, in the back, we have the five-year report that shows all revenues, and that's for your information moving forward. We'll have future five-year reports as we move forward through this process.
Okay. I want to thank all the public that came out tonight on this. We'll be having the, this, this is just sort of a review. You'll be able to speak up on this at our next town hall meeting, as well as give your ideas on, on what's going on. But, Council, did you have anything to say? We have Mayor and Council comments on the agenda.
I don't think I have really much to add to tonight's presentation.
Ms. Scott? Ms. McGlynn?
Thank you to everyone for your presentations. I appreciate it.
Ms. Douglas? And for once, I don't have anything to say. So I think that, thanks, everybody, for coming out. We appreciate it. We'll have another one of these, and then, of course, the two town hall meetings. Please make some notes, and, and we'll be glad to see you next time. Thank you. May I have adjournment? Move to adjourn. Second, approved.